...place right now that will match the Rufflock railing that we have up there. So what you see there is will be changed just a little bit to that court 10. We've also done, you know, like I said earlier, done the re- redid the crushed limestone surface. We went down there and widened it out about three foot and totally, you know, after Atlas, that place you couldn't barely get to and experience that site. So we went through there and rubbed that all out and put any trail surface in. And then that's a picture of our lower deck that's right below the falls. We installed that and hardened that up because if you remember, for most of you guys, like Katie said, I grew up here, and what Rufflock Falls used to be like, I mean, it was just basically being loved to death. You know, you'd walk up there, first thing you went to, there was this gigantic puddle there, and people were just, that's how they were getting into the water, you know? And I'm sure you guys have all been to Rufflock lately. And what we've done there, and that's the same thing that we want to do to these sites here. So we've hardened that up to, you know, to help preserve that site.
So what Shannon's got left here in the site, we wanted to preview this, and when we start the master planning process, I know that sometimes busy schedules in life maybe isn't possible to attend one of the stakeholder meetings, one of the public input meetings. So folks can log onto a website, and they can answer a series of questions, look at maps, look at updates, look at some of the site analysis and inventory, and really be part of that process about having a voice in what the vision for the state park and what that state park will look like. So like I said, it's another opportunity to get that public comment collected and then reviewed and read and listened to. So I want to show you guys what the website will look like. So to end the presentation, I just want to say thank you for your time. I looked at your agenda. Mayor, I won't take up anymore unless you have questions. And again, just appreciate the opportunity to sit with you guys tonight. If there are things afterwards that you do want to ask, you can go out and call or email. Like I said, the website will go online through another month. Would love to visit here for you guys.
Well, I certainly do appreciate you coming and giving us this presentation. This is our first probably formal look at it besides what we read in the paper. What questions does the council have since we have them here?
Mayor, I have a couple.
Go for it.
By your presentation, which is very good, it almost seems like this is a done deal, the way you presented, and is that true?
Right, and thank you, that's a very, very good point to bring this up. I'm looking at it, obviously, from my chair as being optimistic. So although the state park, there's still a two-fold process that needs to happen. The land trade has to go through, and then it comes back home, and the legislators have to choose to designate a state park. As far as a master planning process goes, we're going to move forward with that because we want to be able to, in a hopeful, optimistic mindset, that we'll be able to have a state park. And so we want to make sure we've done our due diligence with listening and getting everything ready so we can have that ready to go when the opportunity comes. So no, there's a two-step process still needs to take place. Thank you.
I have a question. What about the road that goes up there? I too grew up here, and what about getting up to Iron Creek Lake from that area? Do you have to pay the fee to get through that road?
So the road, the scenic byway road, there will be no fee to drive the scenic byway. As far as, I'm going to let Shannon answer the Iron Creek Road because geographically he's going to be able to give you the points on the map better than what I can.
Yeah, basically, he's talking about 2.22.
2.22, yeah.
Yeah. And that's, has yet to be determined, our fee structure, if we're going to have that or not, it's hard to answer.
So 2.22, sorry, now I understand what, okay. So that will be part of the rim to rim. As you could just see in the map, that goes through the bulk of the whole state park area. So we need to visit about that further and understand what's needed in order to operate the proposed park. So what's going to happen is during the master planning process, we're going to look at if there are preservation things that we need to do there, like Shannon talked about the viewing platforms. I know I've been asked, is there an opportunity for people to step their feet in the water down there? Things like that that we need to look at, that people have voiced to me that they want. Possible improvements on the road, possible trail connectivity improvements, too. So all of those things we need to look at, and then how can we sustain those, and then make sure the fee structure matches that sustainability. So I can't tell you, this will be the fee, this will be the dollar amount, because that would be irresponsible for me without understanding what we actually need.
So you are going to charge, charge to use Spearfish Canyon?
That's open to see what need there is. I can't tell you there will be camping, some camping fees, very similar to what there is now for Rod and Gun and Timon. But as far as what that other fees will look like, I've got to know from the master plan what kind of sustainability there is to make sure we can pay for the improvements or the needs of the park. So what I can tell you is what across the other parks that we do, the $30, the $4 for the car, or the $6 for the car. But I don't want to say yes or no tonight, because it would be premature for me to do that.
I, you mentioned that you have public meetings coming forward, and the first set was stakeholder meetings. Who are the stakeholders?
Great question. So we're developing the list right now, and we've reached out to folks in tourism, folks in business, our adjacent landowners. We also have city government officials, as well as our senators and representatives. So we're developing that list. So if there are stakeholders, Mayor, that you would like to see on the list, please let us know.
I think, well, for one, the people who live in the canyon really want to be represented. So I would, are they part of that conversation then? And then when are the public meetings, and where are the public meetings?
Wonderful question. So there'll be three public meetings, and we want to host them as close as we can in the vicinity to Spearfish. So we've reached out, but the dates, exact dates, they'll be mid-January, but I can't give you an exact date yet.
Okay. Well, let us know, and we can help facilitate a place for that to happen, to make sure that everyone around here gets the action.
Exactly. And like I said, if, you know, life gets busy and schedules are challenging, and even though there is three, I understand that that might not work for everybody. So the website is a good alternative to submit written comments, and then also to see updates on the inventory and the project.
Okay. Any other questions?
To be honest with you, I have not, you know, in talking to people in this area, I have not heard one positive comment about Spearfish Canyon State Park. They're concerned about what is happening to their area, they consider it their area. They're concerned about everything, you know, another form of government, the whole ball of wax. They're concerned about the fees, they're concerned about their access, they're concerned about everything that comes with Spearfish Canyon. So I'm, I, at the present time, I have a very negative feeling about it, you know? I think more has to be outlined, more has to be told. You've done a lot of work in that area. You've done the trails, you've done the bridges and stuff. So are you responsible for it now?
Yes.
Yes, and how?
But why, you know, so if you're responsible for it now, why do you want to make it a park? You are already taking care of the ultimate needs that are there.
What I can tell you is that when we went into and looked at the vision for that area, we've been working on the state park from, and Matt, you're going to have to, for timing up here, I believe in March is when we really had that land transfer that included the lower falls, is that right? In March? Okay, yeah. This predates me just a little bit, so I'm going to share my facts correct here. So when we started, the state park was debuted by the governor, the state of the state in January. So we went into it, accepting those key items, just like you spoke of, the falls, with the goal, with the end goal, of being able to establish a state park there. And when you asked about, I'm guessing where you're going, is if we already have those and we're taking care of them right now, how are we doing that monetarily? We're using the money from state park entrance licenses that people purchased with all of our other state parks to pay for those improvements. But if that predates me slightly, I'm going to let Matt talk a little bit, give him what he can say for you.
You know, maybe let me back up a little bit. Game Fish and Parks entered the canyon in 2006 with the purchase of Rufflock Falls with the whole, through Home State and the Spearfish Canyon Foundation. So that was our beginning, Rufflock Falls, Savoy. I'm not a lifelong member to the hills, I've been out here, I agree, been with the Department 15, but what I recall, my first visit to Rufflock Falls was the chain link fence that looked like more of a prison, walking, trying to beat the falls. That Home State did to reduce their liability. The state came in, we seen the area, we seen the areas, even though it was basically fenced off as being loved to death. So our focus at that time, coming into Rufflock Falls, as well as Savoy, the fishing pond up there, was to, how do we preserve this? How do we, how do we save this for future generations? And how do we find that balance between use and preservation? And that was our model through Rufflock Falls. I guess I'm proud of that. I think the department did a nice job, and I think we continue to do with that. This past spring, it was always the goal to take over Spearfish Falls. And there were some issues there with Home State Mining Company. When are you guys ready to sell this property? Spearfish Canyon Foundation had a long-term easement to maintain the trail with them. After Atlas happened, three, four years ago, they kind of backed away from it, saying, this is beyond us, and this needs to go to be fishing parks because they're better suited to maintain this area. So this past spring, it all came to fruition, it all happened, again with the help of the Spearfish Canyon Foundation. So we took over another 73 acres in the canyon, and that's the process we're in right now of making those improvements to make that sustainable for the traffic that goes there. So as it gets loved to death, it still preserves that balance of holding that there rather than the shoreline's washing away, erosion and all that. We created the new bridge to go down, enhance the trails so people can access it more easily now. We cleaned up after Atlas. So that's part of that process there. So why move on from there with the Spearfish Canyon State Park concept? Is to bring that whole area of Little Spearfish Canyon and what we currently have into one continuous park setting primarily. What we're doing right now is going from the Savoy Pond that's on the right side here down to Lapstream, right in that area there, we want to create a trail on the old aqueduct. And I'll be honest with you, right now, we're working towards that, but we have to work with this animal called the Forest Service. And I'm not knocking them, but there's 650 feet in the middle of that trail that crosses the Forest Service. So we're working with the Forest Service to try and need that trail. They have their hurdles to jump through, we have ours. With that same process, is we want to basically connect Rufflock Falls to Timon and Rod and Gun through a series of trails as well, to make it better access for the people that want to come to the canyon. Some things we've heard is, oh, you're going to bring more people to the canyon. I don't think so. The people are already coming. Spearfish Canyon is known nationally, internationally, so people are going to continue to come to this place. So if we don't step in and do something and help try and preserve it where they're walking, where they're recreating, you end up with a mess. And that's the business that the Division of Parks and Recreation are in for the state of South Dakota. We got into that business to find that balance between providing a use and preserving that. You know, it's different than, than say, a city park where, you know, you're providing more of that outdoor recreation in a high-use level. Here, the high-use comes, but yet, how do we preserve that so it stays that for generations to come?
So I have another question. You say that you want to preserve a mess. Is there a mess up there now?
No, not a mess. I guess I missed.
That's what you kind of came across as?
No, no. What we're trying to do is, when we first came in, when Home State had Rufflock Falls, you know, there was no armoring of the shoreline there. It was like a slippery slope going down in the creek. Because it wasn't in their, it wasn't in their interest to do anything with it. You know, so if you kept doing that, you'd just keep be rolling that out further. I mean, you can go up there today and still see it, I can point it out to you. So I mean, so you have to control the volume of people coming. We see the same thing in trails throughout the state. I worked out at Custer State Park, you go in and manage your trails, they get run it out, they get deteriorated. So it's just a process of managing that because the people are coming. So I guess our hopes are to keep Spearfish Canyon, that special place that people have come to enjoy for years and have come to love, just like we have, but to preserve it in a sense that there's that balance because those people are still going to come. But if you didn't do anything with it, it starts to degrade and literally fall apart. I mean, roadways are the same way. You look at any type of infrastructure, once man gets involved, it has to be managed to some level. So, so no, not saying that it was a mess, it was just, it wasn't, Home State wasn't the recreational business, you know? And after Spearfish Canyon Foundation, whoever could maintain the trail below Spearfish Falls, the bridge washed out and all that, they weren't in a position to maintain it anymore. They were following their forest, and it was beyond their means, so.
Well, I hope you continually talk publicly, because we've heard nothing, but I haven't had a positive comment about this process.
Right.
So I hope all the stakeholders, you know, as much information as you put out there, as much, we want to make sure that all of the input is heard.
Yeah, and that's, and that's our goal, that's what we're starting tonight. And with Commissioner Schmidt's question on, Councilmember Schmidt's questions on why, it came to me, it's like, I don't think we made it clear enough what we truly, what we currently own in the canyon, and why. And regardless of what happens here, Savoy, Rufflock Falls, Spearfish Falls are going to remain in state ownership. If this thing, for some reason, doesn't go through, we're optimistic because that's what we believe and that's what we do. But yet, we're in this full heartedly, regardless of what happens on those three areas, we're going to continually manage them and improve them and preserve them so we can reach that balance so for generations to come, they can enjoy the falls and what the canyon has to offer.
I just wanted to ask a question, just for verification. Now, except for it looks like a private cabin owner in the, a pocket of a private cabin owner, this is all public land already, whether it's in federal or state hands, correct?
Correct.
And so you're talking about the management of this land and who's going to preserve it?
Yes, yes. There's nothing that we would take over with this proposal. It's private land right now. I mean, the other, and the whole thing up there would be the Lapstream and the Spearfish Canyon Lodge, of course, but beyond that, it's all Forest Service land currently, other than the state ownership.
Now, I do want to reiterate what you've heard tonight. We have had some very, we've had some comments, just so we don't want the state park. I do want to say that I have, I have had some positive comments, though I don't want you to walk away thinking that everyone in Spearfish is against it. I think that there are definitely two sides to it. But there have, there have been positive comments from people in the community, whether it be business owners or tourism-related and that sort of thing. So there, it's a mix, but I just want, and it's just not, it's not one-sided, but there definitely is some, some negative views out there of what is going to happen to the canyon. Because I think the, the point is, it's so important to us, you know, it's, it's part of our identity, it's our name. And so we really want, you know, change, we don't want it to change. And so that's, that's a major obstacle that will have to be overcome, so. But I do thank you for coming. It was very good. We look forward to the meetings with you, and I'd like to be invited to the stakeholder meetings, just to, to be a part of that and to hear what the issues are that's coming up, that would be very good, but thank you. Any, any other comments or questions?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing to consider an application from Leland Ruzika with the B&amp;B Lounge and Bed Porch for an off, on-off sale malt beverage license at 703 Main Street to allow them to be open on Christmas Day and able to sell beer only.
They currently have a retail on-off sale wine and liquor license, but they do not have the malt beverage license. And so in order to sell malt beverage during that period of time on Christmas Day, they have to also have this license. Because only those types of licenses are able to sell, you know, on-sale malt beverage on Christmas Day. So they have decided that they would like to do that, sort of applying for that license.
Do you have anything to say on that?
No, that's just one of those strange South Dakota things that's still out there. We run into it year to year where one bar across the street can't because they restrict the malt beverage, and they can't. For us, it's just a matter of knowing who's supposed to be able and who's not.
Okay.
It won't create any major.
Just following the rules? Okay.
Pretty much.
All right.
Move to approve.
Well, first need to open the public hearing.
Public hearing.
So at this time, open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please go to the podium and state your name for the record.
Does that include the?
No, this is just on the malt beverage license is the, is the public hearing. Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Do you have a motion, John?
Might I? I'm to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 1258, this is the first reading of the 2016 budget supplement.
I did send out all of this information in the packets with somewhat descriptive list of, to explain all of the conditions and changes. Like we did, I sent out another email saying that I did make another change to it, which is increasing one second penny department fund and transferring that budget authority from another, so it made no net cash change to it, but I didn't want to bring that up. That was a $30,000 change. And it has to do with the upcoming, you know, the training and the puts and plucks. We had that money budgeted, it just happened to be budgeted. But I guess, this is a number of things. The net cash balance would be limited to two funds, which was a little bit to the general fund and then also the Spearfish Revolving Fund. And of course, that cash was for the housing study, which was the approved item this year. It just did not make the budget process because it was conceived after, you know, the October timeframe was 2015. And the general fund, actually, was a $65,000 total fund balance. I do perceive that by the end of the year, our revenues will exceed budget by that much. We've already seen a number of the different revenue items well over budget, we just won't know until the end of the year on sales tax, the final sales tax, and the property tax, because there's probably a lot of people that should, that they pay one month later. Historically, we haven't met, you know, our revenue budget there on property tax, but from history, the story, right, that's, you know.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion on those items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Resolution 201636, resolution to enter into a design bill contract for the 2017 water system electrical upgrades for the wells.
Robert is, Robert is not feeling well tonight, so I have some information on that. These were budgeted projects that we had booked at. Our total budget estimate is about $75,000 for these two projects, consists of a new BFD at the Bigna Well, and then we'll be installing sine wave for load reactors with Skate at Taiyans at the Young, Alexson, and Kite Well. These are all, provide better energy efficiency and also provide water protection and some other remarkable upgrades that will be with the Skate.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I understand that you would like to address the council.
I was here to provide some remarks on Spearfish Canyon.
Okay, well, it wasn't a public hearing, they were just making a presentation, but I will, I will make some room for you to do that. I'll give you a few minutes to do that, if you'd like to. Yep, yes, please.
This is still hot?
It is.
I'm Jim Nelson. It's been a while, since I've been here, worked with several people here during the FERC process. And I'm a resident here of Spearfish, but also a canyon owner. I was on the Spearfish Canyon Owners Board for nine years, six as president. I think someone brought up the point here to the presenters, the fundamental question was not answered, it wasn't even addressed, and that is, should there be a Spearfish Canyon State Park or not? And back in February, I sent a package to the governor, provided a copy to the mayor that brought up that point, that with the formation, or with the Home State selling the land in the canyon, much good to us homeowners, and with very tight covenants in my head, they also, obviously, were going to sell those parcels that are now part of the whole state park. In 1990, foreseeing the Home State departing, the Forest Service hosted a group that became known as the Corridor Management Plan, Planners. They didn't publish the results, but they printed them. When we talk about stakeholders, it included all of the stakeholders, not only us, but the Florence County Commission, the Forest Service itself, Home State, Chambers of Commerce that we did with Spearfish, Game Fish and Parks DNR, and maybe a couple others. But the point was, looking forward for 25 years on how we would manage and protect the canyon. And I'm not going to go into that, but I can make another copy available if any of you are interested. Many people have gotten interested lately. The problem was, the governor and Game Fish and Parks, they didn't give us the courtesy of an answer. We recommended that they take that document as a starting point and determine exactly how and why a Spearfish Canyon should be done. But some key points in there were, at that time, it was considered and rejected, asking for the canyon to be a national scenic byway. It was kept to the state scenic byway and a Forest Service scenic byway for the very issues some brought up here. And that included, they didn't feel, that group didn't feel the canyon should be needed for their advertising, that it was going to grow on its own, 14A is somewhat limited as it is, and so on and so forth. So that was, the point being that the traffic there was already high and was going to continue to grow as it has. But some other key things that came out of that were, with the trails, like that being talked about here, the recommendation was they keep the 76 Trail and the bottom of the canyon trail that now goes to, excuse me, Spearfish Falls, but get those trails hooked up to the trails that went up to the rim, to the extensive trail system on the rim, with a, with a fundamental point being, keep the trails out of the bottom of the canyon because it obviously is very, very fragile. And several other, many other things. The Forest Service created Special Area 4.2A to manage the canyon. It, some of what came out of that to manage the canyon, it, some of what came out of that was no off-road vehicles in the canyon other than on roads, no stomp, stompobills other than from Savoy up to the Black Hills Trails, and no further commercial development. That was followed up afterwards by Lawrence County and their long-range planning, limiting and reducing and refusing any further commercial development in the canyon other than what Home State and the Forest Service had approved to begin with, which included the old historic places at Shion Crossing, the Latch String, and the Rimrock Lodge down here, the Wakey Up Campgrounds. So there's been no further commercial development, don't think there needs to be, probably shouldn't be. The owners at the time were tasked with trying to maintain the property that was transferred to them at the same level Home State had for 100 years. And Home State helped write the covenants, which were attached to each deed and perpetuity and filed with the plan to develop that it became and approved through Lawrence County. So all of that went on, they covered every issue that you could think of. And remember, Home State, as opposed to what was said here, Home State kept that canyon open and access to the public at no charge for better than 100 years. The parcels they chose to sell, that they kept after the Home State Forest Service land exchange, included the Savoy Dam, included Spearfish Falls, Rufflock Falls, Little Spearfish Dam, and at that time, some land at the mouth of the canyon here that the state Spearfish finally wound up owning. But Home State's condition for selling these parcels that we're talking about here, it wasn't clear tonight, and I think it needs to be clear to everyone, those five parcels, Home State laid a requirement on that they'd always be open to the public at no fees, has a condition of sale. Now, in this room in 2006, then Secretary Cooper of Game Fishing Parks briefed the plan that Senator, that Governor Rounds had put under, in place, to buy those five parcels. And the concern, we supported that, as did Lawrence County Commission, concern was to set aside funding to own it and maintain it. And Secretary Cooper at that time had a plan which she, which she pursued and was successful, where they transferred over $600,000 bucks to an interest bearing fee at the state that came from the Whitewood Cleanup Funds, that could be transferred to adjoining water ships. So they had that plan. Now, what the young man talks about here of cleaning those areas up, Home State stopped maintaining them and essentially closed Rufflock because they didn't want to spend the money to maintain them, and they sold Rufflock, Savoy Dam, and Little Spearfish in 2004 with a commitment to sell Spearfish Falls at some time in the future. And Secretary Cooper came here in 2006, and his briefing was very good, Hollywood funded, what the conditions were, and a commitment, and it's noted in his pitch, and I still have copies of it if you're interested, there would be no fees on these parcels, these five parcels. Now, Game Fishing Parks has done a very nice job, we've been very pleased with it, they tore out the old dam at Savoy, put in those step pools, they tore out the old dam at Little Spearfish, put in a fishing pond, they then took over Rufflock, cleaned it up, and it was in bad shape. And that's a message for what they plan to do in the future. But we, we thought they had done a great job on that, they managed it as a nature area. And another commitment that Secretary Cooper made, he noted the work of the Corridor Management Plan and all the stakeholders, said he would, the Game Fishing Parks would continue to coordinate with those stakeholders and advise them every step they took, and they did, before each of those, they went over what they were going to do. So we expected the same model when they took over, excuse me, took over Spearfish Falls. Now, we're talking about fees, we don't know the answers, what travel will be, when it comes to fishermen, it may be. Another thing that Home State guaranteed, they replanted that old canyon, and anything that didn't go to the homeowners went to the Forest Service. And that included typical 25 to 50, 25 to 30-foot setback from the creek, and the commitment was that the creek would always remain open to the public with no additional fees. Now, you wonder, fishermen's have to pay additional fee or have access to it. But in any case, when you start talking about developing Little Spearfish Canyon, and that's what it is, you're talking about probably one of the last semi-primity areas in the hills, some of the people that use those campgrounds use them for the very reason that they're semi-primity. Now, if you start talking about, say, for Bismarck, I don't know here, and that would be an issue to bring up with the stakeholders, when, if they talk to us. If you intend to improve those campgrounds, and you intend, you would probably expand parking areas, you're talking about putting in showers and so on and so forth. Little Spearfish Canyon, the total bottom of that canyon is what you would call right area, which most of the Forest Service directives-